There's no RC usage.
No, that was called.
That she was able to find the issue. I, yeah. Fastest way to connect. I'm a T and I'm a D and I'm a therapist. Um, how do you work with it? University of Chicago, Masters. And now what he does, he's a specialist. When a major corporation wants to hire an executive, they come back from the.
Okay.
You're all saying. They came to Amazon and Microsoft, opened it and have been. You think I'm kidding? Ready?
Oh, you did? Okay. It was the perfect.
You have a panic in there. I'm not having a house without. Did you bring a panic in there?
Yeah.
Did you talk? Not critically.
In St. John's, actually. I was just coming to.
Thank you. Uh, we're now calling to, uh, calling to order. The November.
December.
I'm sorry, December. Well, November's passed. Yeah. December eleventh, meeting of the Meridian Township Planning Commission. And the first thing I'm going to do is call the role. Vice Chair Trisise.
Present.
Ms. Shrewsbury indicated she was not able to be here tonight. Commissioner McConnell.
Present.
Commissioner McCutis. No. Commissioner Scales.
Present.
Commissioner Brooks is not here. Commissioner Snyder.
Present.
Commissioner Richards.
Here.
And the chair is here. Do we have a quorum?
Oh, Commissioner Brooks came in. We now have a quorum. One, two, three. Six.
Four, five, six. Yes, we have a quorum. All right. The next item is public remarks. Is there any, do we have three people in the audience today? Anybody want to make a statement to the board at this time? Very good. All right. So we'll move on then to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Salute.
Second?
I'll support it.
I move to approve the agenda of, uh, November. December eleventh.
December really good.
Twenty twenty-three.
It's contagious.
Groundhog Day.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. The agenda is approved. Now approval of the minutes from November thirteen of twenty twenty-three.
I move to approve the, uh, the minutes of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Just a question about the minutes. There's a statement in roll call. And where it says the chair called the role of the board and all board members present.
Good catch.
And up above.
Everybody who was there was present.
Yeah.
Set me.
I was gonna say.
I was present virtually. It doesn't count.
I'll make that correction. Thank you.
All right, with the amendment suggested by Commissioner Scales. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
There is no opposition. The minutes are approved. We have communications from Williamstown Township.
Yep.
We won't have an opportunity to see.
Master plan process.
Yep. And then, uh, now we are on item number seven. The record should reflect that, uh, Commissioner McCutis has joined us. I'm sorry, Commissioner McCutis. Yes.
All members present?
Except those that said they were coming.
Yes. All right, so we're in, we're on, uh, item number seven, which is a public hearing on, uh, resolution twenty-three zero thirty-six regarding fifty-six eighty-one Shaw Street.
Zoom in a little bit so you can see that. Um, Liliac LLC is the applicant for rezoning number two-three-zero-three-six on five-six-eight-one Shaw Street to rezone one parcel at said property from professional office to RC, which is a multiple-family residential district. Uh, this, um, existing property is unoccupied, but if you've been over there, there is a building on the property. My understanding is that previously operated as a dental office. The future land use map from the twenty-seventeen master plan, which you see on the screen right now, this is the future land use map. Uh, designates the property in the R-three category, which is one, one and a quarter to three and a half dwelling units per acre. Uh, that, according to the zoning plan and the mass, the zoning plan and the master plan correlates to the RA, RB, and RX zoning designations. Um, which, which, if you total those all together, you're looking at single family and with the RX, a dupla, a possible duplex. Those are the zonings that correlate with the R-three. Uh, this, this is the R, this, the, so the current designation of PO does not correlate, is, is more intense than the, than the future land use map. Uh, the RC zoning is as well. The applicant makes the, made the point, uh, it is closer, but it is still more intense than the master plan plans for in that area. Uh, surrounding properties to the west, north, and east are also designated R-three. Uh, and then to the south, that pink area that you see there is designated in the future land use map as mixed core. Uh, the property immediately to the west, right here, is owned by the Ingham County Drain Commission's office. Uh, the schedule of regulations and the zoning ordinance indicates that, you know, with the minimum standards for the RC zone, this parcel is large enough and wide enough. And the, that's, that's not an issue here. Uh, the RC zone does allow fourteen residential units per acre. As the subject property is approximately zero-point-four acre in size, that would then allow five residential units. So his request for a quadplex is within the RC zone. Uh, surrounding properties, uh, you have a res, it's the Village of Nokoma, uh, residential district, it's unique to this area in the zoning ordinance. It's all of this to the west, north, and east, and then everything to the south is Zone C-two commercial. Uh, there's no wetland issues or anything with the site. Um, we did look at our, at ITE Trip Generation Manual and compared general office to multifamily residential. And after that analysis, we, there's no traffic analysis or anything, no traffic study required for this rezoning. It's, it's pretty comparable when you do the, when you do those combination, do those calculations. I can answer questions that you have. Uh, the applicant is here to speak. And that's everything I have to say. That's pretty, that's it in my nutshell.
Any question? Go ahead.
Yeah, on Mr. Sharkey, um, since this is surrounded on three sides by the NA zoning for the Nokoma's.
Mm-hmm.
Village, would it be more appropriate to rezone this as part of the NA as opposed to, it, it would also allow up to fourteen per.
It does not allow the mo, the fourteen per.
I thought I read that it did.
I can check that, but I do not believe that the, that that would comply. Um. Districts.
Scary how fast he does that, isn't it?
I only do it every time today. Um, permitted by right in the, are, all uses permitted by right in the RB district, which is a single-family residence, and then two-family dwellings. Um, use is permitted by special use permit, everything allowed in the three-seventy-six C. Okay, so it, so by special use permit, they could, they could, so, so they could, so they, so. We had a lengthy conversation about the different routes that they could take, the applicant could take. By rezoning to the RC, they can go directly to site plan with the quad. If they rezone to the RN, they'd, they'd then have to go through another public hearing process for a special use permit to get the multifamily, the multifamily building. So yes, you're right, but it is a longer process. Okay.
There's a couple of folks. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, all right. Um, if this is rezoned, does that mean that the dental office will no longer occupy that building? Or is it mixed use where the dental office can still be there?
I'll let him, I'll let the applicant speak to that more directly, but generally speaking, his plan, their plan is to redevelop that building. So the building wouldn't be demolished.
Right, okay. But in, in.
It would not be, it would not be a dental office, but.
Right, that zoning doesn't allow for.
Right, but it hasn't, it hasn't been a dental office for quite some time.
Oh, I got you. Okay, thank you.
It is not a currently operating dental office, and I've got pictures that prove it.
Is there any current occupancy in?
No.
I was wondering if staff could, uh, say a bit more about the mixed-use core designation and the, uh, future land use and maybe how that does or doesn't relate to the, uh, PICA in that part of the township.
Well, this isn't. Or mixed-use core, but I can bring that up and I can talk to you about that, I guess. Um. So a current master plan. It got added today. Because I know the Friday yesterday. Here's the future land use map that I'm looking at, and the area that we're talking about is up in this area here. I've zoned in on that, on, in your, in your report. Um, the mixed-use core, this is the langu, this is where it talks about it specifically. Um, envision. It, yeah, it is the, it's, it is the PICA area. It's the, uh, envisions walkable engaging streetscapes. I mean, you can read it in front of you. Mixed-use buildings, retails, um, model regulations here. Um, it's Zone C-two, so it's not a multifamily, or it's not a mixed-use development to the south or anything. It's just a straight C-two zoning. But the Haslett PICA, here's, here's the Haslett PICA. It is, here's Shaw Street right here. So you are in that PICA area.
So on this map right here, where is this red property at?
Shaw Street.
That's the.
Right, right here, right on the north end of this.
And I, uh, we can discuss that later, but it seems to me relevant to the, uh, the use that's being proposed in terms of, uh, the intentions of, uh, how I understand that mixed-use core to be a walkable, likable kind of environment. So, uh. Even though it, well, that, that's why I brought it up.
Any other questions of staff?
You. And. In the, in one of the, in the ord, code of ordinances, I thought I saw, excuse me, I thought I saw in there that it said approval of the planning commission or planning director.
For what?
For. One of the, getting a permit to do this. I thought I saw something in there about that.
Planning director doesn't have the authority to rezone the property.
Okay.
And this is a multifamily development. He would go directly to site plan, which is an administrative approval.
Okay.
Any other questions for our staff? Does the presenter wish to, uh, address us?
No, just.
If you, if you want to come up and give your name.
So, um, the building has been vacant for about.
Excuse me, sir. Could you tell us your name, please, first?
And address.
Yeah, my name is Roosevelt Agazani.
And your address?
Uh, my address?
Yeah.
It's in, uh, one-six-nine-two-two Songate, uh, in Lansing. I work at MSU and, um, yeah, so this is a property that has been vacant for about twenty-five years. At the initial, the, at that time, it was used as a multi, uh, multi-medical offices. And we have four distinct units there with four meters, four gas meters, four water meters, four electricity meters. So four complete separate units in there, but has been vacant for, for quite some time. And the plan is actually to basically convert those units and, um, have them as residential, uh, basically properties for leasing. So that's, that's the whole plan.
Any questions?
As I understood it from the drawings and, and the pictures you put in there, you're not planning on changing the footprint of the building. You're just changing the use of the building that's there now and upgrading it to current standards. Is that correct?
Exactly, exactly. We keep the building as is. We don't change the outline. We don't change the site plan, nothing. We just, uh, maintain it, renovate it. And, and basically it has all the infrastructure there, so we just use those.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
I have a question for Brian.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
How many tenant facilities were in the building?
Uh, like the applicant said, there are four meters there, so at some point there may have been four office suites. It had the capability of having four, whether there were four at any point or not, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. So. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other co, questions or comments from, yes, go ahead.
Has there been any, this for staff, I guess?
I'm sorry.
Has there been any, look at, excuse me, the parking that would be required for the use, I mean, preliminary, I know this isn't a site plan review, but, uh, is there been a kind of a practical look to see if what is being proposed there fits most of the regulations? Or is it the staff's view that there'd be a number of variants is required in order to set?
No, I don't, I think, so the, the standard for multifamily is two and a half per unit. That's ten spots. There's space there for ten spots. What I will say is that during site plan review, um, improvements to that is, are, into the parking area will be reviewed by the Ingham County Road Department. So I don't, you know, they'll have to, you know, sign off on anything, but they do have enough space there for this part, for the parking, yes.
Good. I guess the other question I have, uh, and I apologize if I didn't get a chance to drive by it, but are there any single-family residences around it?
Yeah.
Immediately north of it.
Um, to the.
I think it's to the immediate north.
Certainly to the east. Give me a second. I'll.
North and east.
I think north is drain east, but is that, I thought there was a little.
And slightly north, there's a condominium.
Yeah.
Plugs too. I mean, it's.
So here's, here's the property we're talking about. Here's the Ingham County Drain Commission piece. And then this is single-family, and then there's this duplex development right here. Um, everything within three hundred feet got noticed, and we didn't hear anything from any of these residents.
That, I think, are those condos or duplexes up there?
Either, either way, they're.
Okay.
They're, I'm just seeing the type of building.
So what this picture shows then is that a multifamily residential unit is not inconsistent with other neighborhood usage.
The density of it is, but it's, but, you know, it's, that's, you know, if you go up here, there is a multi-tenant building right here on the corner of Shaw and Lake Drive. I did, you know, I did notice that out there. I think this is another one right here as well.
Um, I was looking at the parcel viewer, and I was having a hard time seeing the zoning for those different, like the condos as well as the, um, what you were just pointing out. I, I can't figure it out.
Everything, everything to the north is RN.
Oh, okay.
Well, here, um, let me, let me reach for, yeah, everything to the north is RN. Uh, the property itself is PO. It's a kind, it's, it's an island of professional office. But everything to the west, north, east, uh, this first row, when you get over here to this church, the C-two line, um, goes like this. And then down like this, and then up like this, and then takes in that property. But everything across the street, everything adjacent to the north is residential.
Yeah.
RN residential.
I think my issue is I don't fully understand what the, what this special zoning is, this Village of Nokoma mixed residential district, but now I, now I know. But that is what it's all zoned.
Could I ask staff to scroll down a little bit so we can see a bit more of the north end of Shaw Street?
Yeah. Want me to zoom out a little?
Um, yeah, uh, that's fine.
Again, there's the property. Okay.
Um, and just, uh, north of that view on, uh, past Lake Drive, there's, um, a wonderful section of new township pathway. That makes that neighborhood really, really walkable to all of the, the county park and all the businesses up there at, um, Marsh and, and Lake Lansing. And, uh, so when I look at this parcel and question, I'm, um, I'm thinking, wow, that's, if, if you're gonna try to increase density in places in the township for walkability, that's a great spot to do it. Uh, there are also pathways along, uh, Haslet Road that lead all the way to Marsh and Haslet, where there's a whole bunch of cool stuff going on. So, um, from the, from that aspect of, of, uh, future land use, it, it makes a lot of sense to me. I've been going past that building ever since I've been here, eighteen, nineteen years, and wondering what the heck is gonna happen to that? And I, I saw a bunch of work was done to, I think, seal it up and make sure it wasn't gonna deteriorate any further. That's great. So, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of the, the least cost path to, uh, getting that property reused in that kind of a way. It also looks to me like these are not, uh, uh, super high-end units that are gonna price a lot of people out of business, out of, out of the market. So I, I think it makes a lot of sense. I yield the floor.
Any other comments from the panel?
I would just also say, I would, I would be in support of this too, as that area definitely is an area that needs attention, is getting more attention. The pathway is right there. It's beautiful. Um, it makes sense for the area, especially given the nature of the different types of residential housing that are in that area. It fits in.
And it has fit in for the last thirty years. Is there any public comment on this issue? All right, then I'm gonna close the public hearing on this. Uh, we're gonna cast a vote to, uh, give guidance to the staff. Uh, let me propose a vote. A straw vote on whether or not to approve the zoning, uh, variation as requested. All in favor? Right?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody propose it? Mr. Sharkey, do you have what you need?
Yes, thank you very much.
Very good.
Okay. Uh, this will be back at the January eighth planning commission meeting for a final vote, and then it will go to the township board. Okay? Sure.
All right. Then we now move on to item number eight, which is unfinished business. Item eight A is the rezone for forty-six sixty Marsh Road.
Here we go. There we go. Here we go. And that's the old report, and here's the resolution, and here we go. This is quick. Um, yeah, this is the second meeting for rezoning two, number two-three-zero-three-four at four-six-six-zero Marsh Road to rezone one parcel at said property from professional office. The application, as you remember, was for C-two commercial. During the course of discussion, the planning commission indicated they would support rezoning this to C-one commercial. Um, I gave you a, kind of a brief description of what's allowed in each one of those districts by right, conditional uses and special uses. And one of the things that struck out to me was one of the concerns that was brought up at, at the meeting, uh, the C-one commercial doesn't include bars and taverns. Um, there's other differences, but that's the one that I kinda keyed in, keyed in on. Um, the applicant was here. She's here again to speak to this. If you have any more questions, she was okay with the C-one district. It works for what, for the operation she's got going on there. And there is a resolution in your packet for the C-one designation.
Any discussion?
Yeah, um, I think I brought this up the last time, but, um, I recall that on the corner of Marsh and Hamilton, that I believe it's an optometry place. At the time that was approved and the building built, because I'm pretty sure they built a new building there, that all fit the, whatever zoning it was, fit that use. Um, now it appears, based on looking at the map and everything, it, you know, there are that and other, uh, uses that don't fit the current zoning. And so I don't know what happened in the ten or so years between when that building was built. So I guess the reason I bring that up is that, um, I don't believe, I, I believe that the, uh, commercial designation, um, is an appropriate use along, um, Marsh Road there. And, um, that, uh, you know, I guess I would be in favor of the C-one. Um, I don't know if C-two allows, for instance, things like drive-through restaurants. Uh, if it does, I don't think we want to do that in terms of allowing it, uh, or even the possibility of it. So I think C-one fits the uses that the applicant is looking for now, and so I would support the C-one.
Any other discussion? If I understand it, basically what's happening here is the building is already non-conforming, and we're trying to bring the zoning into conformance with, with what's already been happening for quite some time.
That is correct.
And the C-one is basically consistent with the other uses of property around it. Is that correct?
The C-one is consistent with the C-two properties across the street. It's consist, it's consistent with the optometry office adjacent to the south, and it's worth noting the, the large church, fairly large church adjacent to the north, too. church, fairly large church adjacent to the north, too, which, you know, isn't exactly a commercial use, but sure gets a lot of people at certain times of the week.
Any, any further discussion, questions?
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. I did follow it, uh, online, and I just wanted to make sure I'm thinking in the right spot. There's, uh, um, some work has been done in the front of the property behind the curb on what looks like a drainage structure.
That is, yes, the applicant's piece can speak to that if you have questions.
I'm dying to know what it is, I'm not sure it's relevant to this application, so if we're gonna hold up the process, but I'm curious.
Just reminder, the property we're talking about is this right here, this is Hamilton, this is Marsh. Uh, the drain project that is, was, you're discussing was right here, and if you don't mind talking about that, I'll bring the applicant up for that.
Um, so, there was an issue with that from work that was done previously, and a new person bought the company, and they came back and fixed it for free for us, actually. So it took care of the flooding that was going on in our parking lot.
Great, great. I, I know there's, um, it's, it's, it's great to see that kind of investment being made in the property and fixing those problems.
We make a motion to approve the resolution presented, which is, so, to rezoning request twenty-three zero-three-four forty-six sixty Marsh, to change the zoning of that property from current residential, I believe it's our C...
P-O.
P-O, professional office, to a C1 commercial. Um, what is the motion, it's, the resolution is presented in our packet.
I would support and, and note that this is a recommendation to the township board.
Correct.
It's easier zoning, then we'll next go to the township board.
Correct.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion before we call for a vote? All right. Commissioner Trisai, it's your motion, so I assume there's a...
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCutts?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
So go to the township board, and we'll be in touch.
The next item for reconsideration is item eight B, elevation four floodplain.
So this is also the second meeting for this, special use permit number two-three-zero-three-five, elevation four, to construct a portion of a required pathway within a floodplain. Uh, you did have the public hearing two weeks ago, uh, it's pretty cut and dry. They gotta have the special use permit for the floodplain crossing to put the required pathway in. If they don't get that, they can't go out, they can't achieve site plan approval and continue with the project. Um, the, it's, it's, it's a relatively small thirty-one point five cubic yard of fill, uh, placement of sixty-three point one cubic yard, well, excuse me, cut, and then excavation of thirty-one and a half cubic yards, and a placement of sixty-three point one cubic yards in, in, in the adjacent area of the floodplain. So we just recommend approval of it, and they can move forward.
This is subject to approval of the drain commission?
The drain commissioner, drain commission office is currently reviewing the site plan. So they don't have to approve this per se, but they are, but again, they are in site plan approval process, so the drain commission's office is looking at this.
And also Eagle.
That is true, that is correct.
That's the one I was trying to think of. Any other questions or, or comments from the panel?
And you do have a resolution in your packet for this.
Motion on the resolution as presented? Commissioner Richards? Second?
Second, the motion to approve resolution on special use permit twenty-three zero-three-five and the elevation four to perform work in the floodplain.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
And unlike the last one, this is a final approval subject to Eagle, and so it will not be going to the board.
Correct.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner McCutts?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Trisai?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We are now on item eight C, which is the Meridian Township master, Meridian Township master plan update.
We are to that time. Uh, we have, uh, gone through the review of the master plan. The, uh, staff, um, distributed the plan pursuant to state law after the planning commission authorized us to do so back in August. Uh, you have held, at the last meeting, you held the required public hearing, um, that the state also requires, and so at this point, you are in a position, uh, if you so choose to do so, is to make a recommendation to the board. Meridian Township, uh, previously, the board has taken it upon themselves to have final approval authority on the master plan, and therefore they will, um, have the final authority this year as well. Be happy to answer any questions? Um, just to follow up on the couple of things from the last meeting, can we, we did, we outlined it on the website now, so obviously more, more available. Um, I have been assured that the flipbook format is far more accessible than a traditional PDF. I will caveat that by saying I don't fully understand the workings behind it, but I've been told that it is much easier for specifically text-to-audio programs to utilize this format than the PDF, and that's why communications went to this format a couple of years ago, is because it's much better for our community members that have, um, visual impairments. Um, and then the one thing I would follow up on is the land acknowledgement. We, you know, put something together, got ready to put it in there, and we started looking into it a little further, and we realized this might be a bigger thing than just putting it in the master plan. Um, and in fact, as we researched it, the recommendation from, at least to what I would consider expert organizations in the field, was to actually reach out to the tribal leaders in the area you're talking about to understand what they, uh, would like to see. And so my recommendation, uh, at this point is that, uh, if the planning commission chooses to move forward with this, that we'd recommend that the, recommend to the board approval of the master plan with a further recommendation that the township board consider, uh, developing a land acknowledgement for all the boards and commissions, because, uh, this, as a community that has deep roots in, um, Native American, especially nomenclature and previously iconography, uh, it probably is something that we should consider on a broader scale, and it's good that it was brought up at this time, and I think that would be my recommendation for how to address this going forward.
Has the Native American community contacted you?
No.
So this is us looking out for them?
Yes, this was a recommendation of the planning commission, um, and, and as I looked into it further, I realized there's probably a different path than just me putting some fancy words on paper, which I can do really well. I mean, I've been doing this for twenty years, so...
We'll be the judges.
Exactly, exactly.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move to recommend approval of the twenty-twenty-three Meridian, Meridian Township master plan update to the township board with a further recommendation that the township board develop a land acknowledgement for use by all boards and commissions in the future.
Support. Any further discussion?
I would just add that we actually have a really good sort of, um, in right now to do this. The timing's actually really good for this, because, uh, Director Massey, uh, previously this year, uh, applied for on behalf of the township, uh, for funding under the Native American Heritage Fund to remove the sign for Okemos Square located at Sour Boulevard and Okemos Road. You may remember the old sign, it was old wooden sign that had a carved, um, Native American female face in it. Obviously, one of the goals of, of the Native Ameri, one of the goals of the Native American Heritage Fund is to eliminate those things in schools and, and communities, and so we applied for and received funding. That sign just got installed, actually, two days ago, three days ago now, and, um, we'll need to be reporting on that soon enough, so it'll be a good opportunity for us to then have that conversation with them as, as a funder of, okay, we'd like to take this another step further, can you, can you guide us a little bit?
I'd like to compliment the publication staff for putting this together. We've mentioned it before, but that presentation is very readable and very attractive, and if you would pass on at least my thanks to them, and I think the board in general would like to thank them for their efforts in putting this together.
I will. Rachel Stolen, uh, was the, the lead on putting this together and put up with a lot of my, uh, I mean, they were, you know, you may recall, I had this grand idea of trying to put this on one piece of paper originally. Um, they, they indulged me for, uh, a little bit, and then brought me back to earth and, and got me into this format, so, they, they did an excellent job. Rachel, I will let her know.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments?
I appreciate the, um, the further discussion that was born of the Native American land acknowledgement and the research that went into that, so I just wanted, I just wanted to give my thanks on, for that as well.
All right, there is a motion and a second?
I just have one more appreciation. I appreciate the teamwork that was cultivated here to move this so quickly, having seen this drag on and on and on years passed. Collectively, we did a good job.
I know you guys have got a lot of work for the next five years, so, we're ready to start tackling it.
All right. There is a motion pending on the table. It's been seconded. Call a roll. Uh, Commissioner Trisai?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCutts?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Support.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Now, it goes from here to the board?
It does. We will take it to the board in January. They are excited to take it up.
Very good. All right. Uh, did we, oh, we're on item nine, which is, I, but I just, there's a little confusion here. Uh, item eight C, is that redundant with item ten on our agenda?
Yeah, so item ten will now, uh, drop off of your agenda going forward.
Very good, thank you. So item nine, uh, is a reapproval of our schedule for twenty-twenty-four.
We, we just had a minor error in this one, we were trying to work around what we thought were gonna be primary dates, I think, and, uh, it, it didn't happen, and so the May and October dates got mixed up on a previous one, and so these are the corrected dates. We're just asking you guys to reapprove this this evening.
The chair makes a motion to approve the amended version of the twenty-twenty-four planning commission's schedule.
Support.
Who is the support, I'm sorry? Oh, thank you. Do we need a roll call on this?
Yes.
We do? Okay. All right. Uh, any further discussion on the agenda, uh, on the schedule? All right. Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner McCutts?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Trisai?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, we are all in reports and announcements, township board update?
Um, so the township board, uh, took up the review of the CV district, uh, the planning commission recommended, and they also recommended approval, we'll be taking that forward for final adoption in January. Um, they also reviewed the rezoning at fifty-ten Park Lake and the adjacent vacant property, um, and at their December fifth meeting, did, uh, move to deny that, consistent with the planning commission's, uh, previous recommendation for denial. Um, I would also briefly like to point out that they, um, yeah, this was after your last meeting as well, the, um, uh, community senior center, it, um, discussion that's going on is still early on, and it's, it's, uh, you'll start to hear more and more about that in the coming year, that's expected to be one of the major goals of the board, um, but Commissioner Scales gave you an excellent update at, at your last meeting, and, and I, we will keep you in the loop as we move forward on that, and that begins to progress. Um, and lastly, I will point out, or two more things, uh, the board, uh, adopted recreational marijuana licensing standards, and opened a window for applications in January. So we will be taking applications, uh, the second, um, so the second Tuesday in January, uh, through, for two and a half weeks. And then those licenses will be reviewed by an internal committee, the, the applications will be reviewed by an internal committee before the board take action on them. Once the board takes action on the license application, then they need to apply for a special use permit, which will come back to this body. Um, so you will be seeing that probably in April is my guess of next year. Um, and lastly, uh, the only other thing I have, um, this evening is just to thank, uh, Commissioner Richards, this is his last meeting, uh, with us, and, uh, I, you know, it's, it's unique to have somewhat of his background, uh, serve on the planning commission after his, his work here, and I think that, uh, Commissioner Richards has, uh, left an indelible mark on this community, and I've learned a lot from him, actually, and it's, uh, excited to see you go, Jerry. So, thank you.
Director Schmidt, one question. The issue of the senior center, is that something that will come before this board, or is that going straight to the, to the, to the board?
I don't see a scenario under which the planning commission is not involved in some way. I don't know what that is yet, because we don't have a location yet. Once, uh, I think once we get closer to knowing where, more specifically, I'll know better how.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liaison reports? Any?
Yeah. We had a, I think, after the last meeting, we had a ZVA meeting on an application to build in the buffer zone around a wetland at, uh, Lake Lansing. Uh, they wanted to, I think, build a corner of their house about thirteen feet into a twenty-foot buffer, was the outer buffer on the forty-foot buffer. Uh, the ZVA, uh, denied that request, and, uh, that's where we were at, that was the only issue on the agenda, so...
Any other liaison reports? I, I attended the downtown development authority meeting, and the entire discussion was about money, and it went in one ear and out the other. I couldn't begin to tell you what they were really concerned about, that it's, it has to do with, with, um, money that they thought they were gonna get from the state and didn't, and now they're trying to figure out where they're gonna make up the loss. Other than that, I simply can't tell you what it was about. No other liaison reports? All right. So project updates?
Can I actually? We don't have, I don't have a, we don't have a project update, nothing changed, but we didn't, I didn't put it in there when I put the packet together. This is already a lengthy packet, and it seems like a good time to talk to you about that. Um, when I get it, when we get a new application for rezoning, for instance, there's a lot of attachments that come with that. I, we can't really do anything about that. All the material that comes in, you see in your packet. But our practice is at the second meeting to write a, a second staff report, put a resolution in, and then include all the original material. That, in this case, made this, made this packet to, I couldn't email it and things like that, you know? It's very large, it's over eighty pages. What do you need in a packet for the second meeting, bearing in mind that everything's available digitally, and you see how fast I can bring stuff up?
I think my suggestion would be to, since most of this comes in, and all of this comes in electronically, to put a link to that portion of the prior meeting, that if someone is reading through this, getting prepared for this meeting, they can just link back without searching for it.
Okay. That's a, that's a good suggestion, I like that.
Um, and the only possible thing that I would suggest that might be into the second packet would be the initial summary that the staff prepared.
You wanna see the original staff report?
That sometimes, that way you don't have to re, repeat it in the second one, and it's, it's available there, it's succinct information in general, and...
Okay.
Um, that might be useful. available there. It's succinct information in general, and that might be useful in some cases.
Okay.
I would add that I don't need an email attachment personally. Having a link to the document that I can download is at least as useful for me and less burdensome on my email server.
That's true.
But I, other people may have different technology and needs, and I don't want to speak for everybody about email attachments. But if there's a version online that the public sees, that's the one I want to get. So I'll just go and get it on whatever device online. So.
Okay. I'll try that with the, your January meeting and the current application you had the, you had the public hearing on tonight. Thanks. I just need that.
Yeah, I, I think the one catch to that would be if a particular issue was an item of serious discussion, and as a result of that, you changed something.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Then we would want the amended document.
Oh, yeah. Any, anything, anything that came in new after the public hearing, of course, you'd see, and that would be included as an attachment. I'm just talking about redundantly putting in the same information twice.
Sure. Any other comment? Very good. So we are now down to public remarks. Anybody wish to address the board on the weather? Very good. Thank you. So public remarks are closed. Commissioner comments? Any comments? I think we really covered that when we complimented the staff.
I have some other staff I'd like to compliment.
Go ahead.
Going all the way back to Susan McGillicuddy and Julie Bricksy and Derek and Dan. I was unable to make the ribbon cutting for the new Lake Lansing, MSU to Lake Lansing River Trail on Friday. But I saw pictures, and it's wonderful. And if you get a chance to walk or bike or anything on that trail, it's already in heavy use by people. It's absolutely spectacular. It's one of the prettiest parts of the River Trail that I'm aware of.
I've ridden it a couple of times, and it is nice. And the stretch from Park Lake over to Oakmuss Road is also going to be a very beautiful ride.
Any other commission comments? Commissioner Scales?
I'd just like to personally thank Jerry for his service. I know it's been said already, but I'd like to say it again. I had an opportunity to watch you leave twice now. I'm not taking it personal, but you left when I joined the board, and you left when I joined the Land Commission. But no, you are a great wealth of information and history, and you're taking it out the door with you. And we appreciate you leaving some of it here in your second time around. So thank you very much, Jerry, for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any objection to an adjournment at this point? No? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you.